Seems to be that there's far more give and give or prior to a church meeting. That I.
I have seven o'clock, so if everyone's ready and CNET is ready, I'll go ahead and call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, October 17th, if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and we'll go next to announcements from the manager with the roll call and some Zoom instructions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the Board, staff, and the public for joining us this evening for the October 17th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are attending virtually using the Zoom platform and wish to speak on behalf of an item, an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name and municipality of residence and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing this meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the Zoom platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Gracie Griffin? Mr. Heller?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, up next is public input. This is an opportunity for anyone to comment on any item not on tonight's agenda. And I'm not seeing anyone in the room or any hands raised online. So we will move on to approval of the minutes. There is one set of minutes from October 3rd. Were there any corrections to those minutes? And if not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Uh, this is Patty, so moved.
Is there a second?
And this is Matt, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to authorities, boards, and commission reports. Up first is the SCLO Center Region Library Report with Ms. Barbara Ziff.
Let's do a test.
Okay, we're gonna pause for just a moment while we check our audio.
I mean, text Cory.
Yes, if you could.
This is Rhonda, I can hear you, and I can see you now, thank you.
Good. Text Cory.
Thank you, and Cory, Rhonda, we can hear you, thank you, and Cory, we'll just check in with you and see if you can hear us and we can hear you.
I can hear you, it was fine, well.
Thanks very much. Okay, do we see Ms. Ziff online?
Do not see Ms. Ziff online, she had indicated she was coming.
Yes, sir.
Is she online?
Okay, yeah, I cannot.
Oh, big shit.
Okay, Ms. Ziff, if you want to share anything from your report, you can feel free to unmute. Maybe. So I'm not sure if she can hear us, we were getting confirmation that others could, so we'll have to move on here in a minute. Pardon me? Uh, we can, yeah. Okay, one more try for Ms. Ziff, and if not... Okay, before we move on. Okay, do you want to try to speak? We have you on two different Zooms. You're on there two times. So what we can do is move on and we can come back to you after our Water Authority report and see if we can get it straightened out. For just a quick moment, I did want to make sure while everyone can hear us, if there was any public comment, if items not on the agenda in case anyone was online and not able to hear that opportunity. If you had public comment, you can raise your digital hand. And not seen any, so we will move on, we'll move forward to the State College Borough Water Authority Report with Mr. Ford Stryker.
Yeah, hi, good evening. My report's gonna be really short, there's not a lot going on with the Water Authority. I submitted some written comments. The one major discussion item at the last Water Authority meeting was there was an outage where the, where they had a boil, no, excuse me, a boil water notice, and the Water Authority was, was trying to reach customers, but unfortunately, they didn't have contact information for a lot of people, so I think the, the idea is to encourage all residents to make sure the Water Authority has your contact information, so if something like this comes up again, they can reach out and, and connect with you directly. Aside from that, I don't really have anything else unless anybody has any questions.
Thanks so much. Any questions for Ford on that report? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thanks so much for serving in that role and for your report.
Okay, good night.
Good night. We're gonna check back in with Ms. Ziff and see if we're able to hear from her at this time. If you want to go ahead and unmute, we could try it. And I think we'll have to...
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We can hear you now, yes. Is there anything you wanted to share from your report?
Uh, no, I submitted a written report, if you have any questions for me.
Thank you so much. Questions for Ms. Ziff on the library? Yes, Patty, go ahead.
Yeah, so in your report, I know you talked a lot about the physical materials, but I check out books through Libby. Do you guys keep track of the number of like electronic books that get checked out?
Um, that's a really good question. They do keep track, but I don't have that statistic right now, but I can come back and give that to you at a later point.
Okay. Yeah, no, I was just curious, because you talked about the physical materials and I don't, I don't do that. I just thought maybe they're, the numbers might even be more if we try the virtual ones, so, thank you.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Any other questions on SCLO? And I'm not seeing any, so thank you so much for your report and for serving on the library board.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to special reports and acknowledgements under diversity, equity, and inclusionary initiatives and acknowledgements. On the calendar, we have Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Filipino-American Heritage Month, German-American Heritage Month, Italian-American Heritage Month, Polish-American Heritage Month, Global Dignity Day, which was October 18th and was recognized, I think, by Penn State and Downtown, so. Before we move on from this section, I did want to take a moment to address and condemn the recent acts of antisemitism that occurred in State College Borough, our neighboring municipality. We didn't want to let this moment pass without commenting, because it's absolutely not tolerable, and I wanted to give the board members an opportunity to say anything if they so wished. I'll go to Patty, if anybody else after that.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I just wanted to, like you, condemn the acts of hate that were occurring in State College and to some of our colleagues. It leaves me with a bazillion emotions, but I think most notably anger. That's not patriotism and that's not anything we would expect, so I, I'm very, very sorry and stand solidly with our friends.
Thank you. Anyone else want to say anything before we move on? If not, that's absolutely fine.
I think I'd like to take a moment here. I just want to, again, strongly condemn the acts of antisemitism and share how happy and proud I am to be a part of this community. I come from Jewish heritage, my father was Jewish, so he had to fight against antisemitism as a child in Brooklyn in the 30s. He had to fight against antisemitism in New York State Maritime Academy, he had to fight against antisemitism as a naval officer in World War II. I sadly had to keep that fight going as a member of the military. Antisemitism is out there. It's something that, you know, Jewish Americans, the Jewish people struggle with often, and it goes unnoticed many times, but I want to say that I'm proud to be in this community, where I can say that openly, because I know our neighbors are our friends and they're here to help. And we have an amazing police force that's here to protect us and to keep people safe throughout the community of all nationalities. And I just want to say I'm proud to be a member, again, of Ferguson Township and State College area, so, thank you. My only comments.
Thanks very much. All right.
I would just echo all of that. It's very upsetting to see the acts that have unfolded. We're, we're all human, we all deserve dignity, and we should be treated as such, no matter who we are or where we come from.
Thank you, everyone, I really appreciate those thoughts you've shared and appreciate you taking the time. So we'll move on now to COG and Regional Committee Reports. Let's see, Human Resources was canceled. Climate Action and Sustainability.
I, I, I don't have anything further to add other than the agenda. I would encourage everyone to take a look at the sharepoint for the Climate Action Sustainability Committee. There is a lot more drafts and documents regarding the Recycling and Refuge Contract. Staff is strongly advising that we're ready to vote on that in November at the General Forum. Of course, we only have like two or three meetings of General Forum left, so we'd like to be able to adopt that in November, so if anyone does see something as you're reviewing the documents that you're strongly opposed to or really, really want to give some input, please forward that to me so that we can have that discussion at our next Climate Action Sustainability Committee, or even as a board if need be, before we go to General Forum to vote on what goes out, so.
Thank you for that. Questions on that? Okay, Public Safety Committee.
My report is in the agenda, but I just wanted to draw attention to kind of follow up on what Ford had talked about when we had that boil water alert, and the, the water company had trouble, they, well, not trouble, they actually were going, knocking on doors, but Public Safety has been working on getting a clearinghouse together whereby, oh gosh, I can't remember, the Community Working Group or something is, they can identify a specific area, and if they have contact information, then they can reach out to folks in a specific area and send out alerts on your phones or, or whatever, so please definitely be sure that the water company has your telephone number so they can send a text or some sort of alert in case of a boil water alert.
But if anyone has any questions about the other items in my report, I'm happy to answer what I can. Thanks, questions for Patty?
With the boil water notices, was, was it a matter of the database not necessarily having up-to-date information, or was it maybe more?
I think that...
The fact that we sometimes in the world of scam and robo-calls and other filters that we have on our tech, tech devices anymore that we're maybe missing critical information that we should know about?
Right, well, I think there was a problem if some, some of the units were rentals, so that the owners had maybe would have gotten alert, I'm not even sure if an alert was sent to some people's phones, but other than that, they did basically go door-knocking, and then they had tried to alert the township offices, but it was after five o'clock, so nobody was there and we were in General Forum. So it was, it's a, it was an opportunity for process improvement, and they definitely are working on it with a clearinghouse.
Well, that's great, and that's a great reminder, too, so thank you for that. Okay, we'll move to the Joint Land Use and Community Infrastructure Committee meeting, that was the joint meeting with CRPC that happens twice a year. Really nothing to add to what was in the agenda, we received some reports. Just a reminder that Jim May is retiring November, so November will be his last meeting. It's supposed to be on the second, that Thursday, that's also the Sustainability Conference, so we may need an alternate over there, so we can follow up with that. We may change that date, too, because I think there are a number of people who couldn't attend, so I'll follow up on that. Any questions on that? And if not, looks like Joint Parks Capital and Authority Meeting was canceled, so we'll go to the Finance Committee. We've been meeting a lot. We've had our three budget review sessions. This Thursday will be the wrap-up of the budget, so as we go through the process, you all saw the schedule of the agencies that present, and so they go through that schedule, we do a line-by-line of the detailed budget and note things, ask a lot of questions, and get the presentations from the agencies. We'll go back on Thursday and... We'll go back on Thursday and get the additional information we asked for. We'll look at some specific items that were called out to address. And we'll also look at some specific items from the program plan that were added into the budget. So, let's see. First, let me go back here just a second. After we review on the 19th, we will actually meet with Executive Committee that day, too. So, we'll roll from Finance Committee. Finance will forward the summary budget to Executive. Executive will then send it to the General Forum at the end of this month. So, General Forum can then send it out to the municipalities for a presentation with the Executive Director here. So, at that time, we'll be able to get even more information from Eric Norenberg about specifics. At this time, what I really need feedback on is for Thursday's meeting, and that would be for those particular items that were identified as new additions, initiatives, or staffing from the program plan that would push the budget over the cap that's been set. So, let's see. If... Maybe it's easiest to bring up... Yeah, so there were two different lists. If you want to go to the Executive Directors...
The Director Letter.
Yeah, the Director Letter.
I'm actually going to look to the Assistant Township Manager. I think he's going to pull it up.
Thank you. That has the list of items. Yeah, they're broken out. Now, it was complicated because those items were actually inserted into the budget. So, the budget that is in the sharepoints that you all have access to includes these items. They weren't broken out. After the cap was calculated this year and it came out to 8.3% or 8.7%, then they went back in, refined the budget, pulled out those items that were going to push the cap over that, and now we just kind of have to... Yeah, thank you so much. So, these are the items. As you can see, anything with a "no" would not be included within the guidelines, so the 8% cap. What is included is the class and compensation market adjustment plan that was approved. So, those are the salary modifications that we approved at General Forum. The other items are in the budget if you were to look at the sharepoints. But again, they're new initiatives or new hires that would push us over that 8%. It would put us at a 15.6% increase in municipal shares. Just as a little history, from 2020 to 2021, total municipal contributions increased by 2.5%. 21 to 22, it was 4.6%. And then last year, it was 8.7%. So, just as a little bit of history and a little bit of context, when we're talking about this 8%, that is no small number. So, the original proposal last year had been, I think, 18%. We had discussed a little bit about the four fire and life safety inspectors, and we had generally supported that as a board. So, I wanted to go back, make sure that's still accurate as we move forward. The one thing that was brought up in this budget session with code, because they would be actual code employees, fire would contract with code to split the time. So, that number you see there is actually half the actual cost. The other half would be covered by code. Those will be rank-and-file firefighters, so they'll be eligible to unionize. So, that is something that was brought up, and it was brought up as a likelihood. So, it's just something else to consider as far as administration. It'd be under COG, of course. It's just that next broad step into paid firefighting. So, we have a mostly volunteer force now with our officers and captains as paid staff. These would be rank-and-file firefighters, so they'd be eligible to unionize. So, while we know we were moving in this direction, that would take us, you know, very firmly in that direction. So, you know, and that's the cost. We pay probably 30 or so percent of that in Ferguson, based on the way the calculation works out. So, maybe, yeah, something around there. So, if I don't hear objections, I will assume that everybody is still in favor of moving forward with those. If we want to discuss it a little bit, I can share what information I have. And I can go back with some additional questions, too. But I have a feeling that whatever is moved forward is what's going to be presented even to us after general forum. So, this is really the time to make these changes. As you think about that, I'll just note the CCMPO grant specialist and the consulting support items. Those are, you know, those are county-wide positions. So, that's... The CCMPO is a county-wide organization, so just something to consider with that, too. And we don't need to support both of those. They could function independently. We couldn't agree to support both. But I am looking for a little bit of feedback on that. A number of parks employees or parks programming staff additions and facilities plan. But again, there were some different presentations about possible program plan additions, and the facilities plan didn't appear on another one. So, I'm not sure what exactly. We'll see Thursday. So, out of these items, I'm looking for general support or additional questions, particularly on these big items, the four fire and life safety inspectors and the CCMPO, and then the group of parks and rec.
Yeah, I'm happy to go ahead and start the conversation. Now, as far as the four life and safety inspectors, I think I probably need a little bit more information. Could we maybe scale that down to two? What are the disadvantages of doing something like that and how does it impact the community? That would be a question that I would have for the folks putting this together. If we maybe could get some clarity on what that would mean.
Patty might be able to give more information on this than I can, but I can give you the very brief answer is that it has to be four because of the way their hours are going to be scheduled. That's why it's going to work because they're going to be both code and fire employees. They're going to be on a... Something like a 10-10-10, 14-day schedule and then off for four days and then back on. They, between code and fire, they've worked out a schedule that's going to allow those four employees to cover some really tricky shifts at the fire department that are hard to cover by volunteers and then also be working daylight at code office. So, because I had the same question.
Yeah, well, then if it's an all or nothing, I would definitely say to... I would support that money towards the four, to the four of them. Again, I think the safety of our community is paramount in everything that we do. I think it'd be justified, yes, hearing that we've gone from 2.5 to 4.6, now potentially 8-point-whatever, and now going a little north of that with these additions is a concern. But if it is needed in the community for safety, it should be supported. So, I also have comments on the CMMPO grant specialist, but I can wait until maybe we're ready for that and stick with the fire, however you wanted to proceed, Madam Chair.
Yeah, that's great. And I'll just comment really quick. We did an exercise in prioritization last year and maybe this year, at the beginning of this year, to help COG with their budget process to say, if the cap is here, you know, and we have to make some hard decisions about where we're going to spend more, less. They have control over where that 8% is divided. And the General Forum came back pretty resoundly and said, public safety is where we want to prioritize. And so, I think what you're saying here reflects what we had decided before. Other comments on the fire and life safety inspectors?
Just that I agree with what Matt had said. And that hour that they have the most difficulty covering is actually the dinner hour as people are either coming home from work or, you know, and that's where the fault lies. And then also having a fire truck driver overnight. So, that's what... But I agree.
And that was echoed even within HR, having to have somebody to drive the truck because I can't just use any given volunteer to drive the truck. But also, there is a nice partnership there with the code office because there are some incidents that do occur outside of the nine-to-five where it is good to have somebody representing the code office to deem whether or not a structure is safe or what needs to be done until it can be restored. And so...
And Cory, thoughts on the fire and life safety inspectors?
No, I don't think I have anything to add to the conversation. I agree that it would be prudent to have them if this is the recommendation. But I'm very cognizant of just how much money the regional government seems to be asking from us this year.
Thanks. So, let's move to CCMPO, and you can see there's a couple of smaller planning items there. The AmeriCorps Sustainability Position, that interim position covers two years. And then that, the LRTB, that's the Long Range Transportation Program or Plan, and that would be a consultant to help prepare that plan. The big numbers are the consulting support and the grant specialists. And again, just a quick recap, this is to help the CCMPO to apply for the money that's in the bipartisan infrastructure legislation that's available now. So, but likely that, you know, that funding is largely allocated by grant anyways. So, it's not necessarily to say that these would be temporary positions. So, I wouldn't want to frame it that way, even though that's what it's going after right now. So, thoughts on either of those, both of those? The position would be a full-time position, and the consultant support would be a contractor. And they got that number by assuming that they'd spend $75,000 per grant application from a contractor. So, if they did three a year, this is the MPO. If the MPO pursued three a year, then they would be spending up to that amount of money on the contractor. Yeah, I'm torn, as I said, on the MPO. But, you know, the 225, it would not be maxed out at that. The position is called a transportation grant specialist. And really, I think that would be beneficial for the MPO to have moving forward. So, if I were to pick one, I think I would pick the grant specialist position and maybe hold off on the consulting support or do a portion of it. I don't know. So, I'm looking for some feedback on that.
Yeah, from attending the Pennsylvania Municipal League Summit, it was the first I actually heard somebody saying that we're probably looking at the most grant money ever out there that may ever be out there. So, I would definitely be supportive of a grant specialist, though, understanding where the consulting support can go hand-in-hand. I would like to be a little more cognizant of those funds. It doesn't sound like we may necessarily need to use them all, but definitely don't want to use them all or even run into a situation where we go over and then we're scrambling to fill up a gap.
Okay. Other thoughts?
Yeah, for me, I absolutely believe that the CCMPO grant specialist is needed. Again, knowing how much money is out there, knowing the value of a good grant specialist in getting the money in, they're phenomenal. They're worth their weight in gold when it comes to identifying them, writing the, you know, the grants and getting the money to where it needs to be. Now, as far... Also, again, with the grant specialist, too, I know we talk CCMPO, but a good grant specialist can work in multiple different facets, applying for multiple different grants, you know. And also, I'll just say in our backyard, we have Penn State, and there are plenty of exceptional grant specialists at the university in our local community that I think it would be an absolute area that, you know, we can tap into, a talent pool, too, with the right advertising. So, with that being said, now, as far as the consulting support on the CCMPO, I don't see as much investment in that space. So, I'm wondering if we could maybe reduce that down to maybe a third of what it is. Because again, a good grant specialist needs to feel supported, so they need the right level of folks working with them. But, you know, that number there seems a little bit excessive, and I probably need to see a little bit more information as to why it is the way it is.
Thank you.
No problem. Thanks.
I'd agree with that suggestion. I think that's good. Jeremy, go ahead.
Not to go into the weeds, but when we're talking about grant specialists for CCMPO, I see other areas where we could use good grant specialists, and I'll leave that at that.
Yeah, no, I have nothing to add. I agree with what Matt said.
And Cory?
I don't have anything to add to this conversation.
Thanks. And there was some comment about the grant specialist being able to be used for other things, helping municipalities apply for grants. You know, so it seems like there may be some space there for the grant specialist to take on some things that they were anticipating the contractor would have to take on. So, I like the suggestion of reducing the consulting amount and yes to the specialist. And then quickly, let's go on to the parks employees.
I mean, I don't... Looking for a comment for me?
Sure.
Again, if we think about prioritization being public safety, and then, okay, it'd be nice if we got more money in through grants. I think the other ones kind of fall off for me sadly.
I agree.
I agree with that. Jeremy? Cory, any thoughts on parks employees?
I'm just looking at the positions that are there. And as we're just opening Whitehall, it might be nice to, you know... I don't know if that's the only staffing that they've got in the budget right now for Whitehall. I didn't look that up. It'd be nice to have somebody to help with that as it's opening. That'd be my priority amongst the parks ones.
Great, thank you. And then again, I didn't see the facilities plan somewhere else, but we had supported that in the past. So, if there's continued support on that, I don't know if this is going to come up on Thursday or not. If there's interest in discussing it, we can. But if not, I can wait and see what happens, and we can discuss it at our next meeting.
Yeah, let's wait and see.
Yeah, okay. I had a couple of other comments that I'll bring up on Thursday. And again, everything is in the sharepoint. And so, if anyone goes in and sees anything you still want to comment on, feel free to let me know. Okay. I think that was it for finance. Any questions on finance? Thursday will also be a regular finance meeting, I should say. And then, very, very quickly, before we move on again, I just wanted to comment on the Pennsylvania Municipal League Summit that several of us attended last week. Next year will be in Scranton, and the following year will be in Erie. I wanted to share, we had a really, really good speaker come and share some information on this dignity index. And hopefully, we can share more in the future on that, but I encourage you to look it up. It was really a way to have productive civil discourse with people you don't agree with. It was very practical, very, you know, realistic tools that were provided, so it was really useful. And then, probably most importantly, I wanted to point out that our township manager was voted in as a second vice president, which lines for up to then be a first vice president and then president. Should be the first manager to hold that role and the first for township. So, it was very exciting.
Congratulations.
It was a great moment. So, I think we're finally done with committee reports. So I think we're finally done with committee reports. We can move on from that. The? Committee?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, that was not in, yes, yes.
My fault.
I was not correct. We have one more committee report. So Facilities Committee was not included in here.
And again, that, that was my fault. You know, new guy, apologies. So we met, of course, at the COG here on October 3rd, and essentially immediately went into executive session to discuss procuring the property that's next to the COG as potential expansion of the COG facilities. With that, we did go ahead and pass a motion to move it over to the Executive Committee for a vote, and then potentially then after that to the General Forum for a vote on buying that property. But that was essentially it. It was ninety-eight percent Executive Committee meeting, so that was interesting.
Okay. So I think that would be to just initially look at it, would be what's going to, is that the motion that was?
The motion was actually to procure it. Yeah.
Okay, to an assessment of?
That would, yeah, the value's essentially been assessed. It's just a matter of, you know, moving forward with buying it.
Interesting. Okay. All right. So we'll probably be adding that to another agenda for discussion at future point. Thank you for sharing that. I apologize. I moved on too quickly from that. Okay, so we'll move to the managers' report.
Provided with the agenda is a copy of my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Questions for the manager?
Not seeing any. Public Director, Public Works Director's report was included. Anything to highlight from that? Not seeing anything. Questions? Not seeing anything. We go to Planning and Zoning Director's report. Anything to highlight?
Nothing to highlight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for Planning and Zoning? Seeing none. Chief of Police report. Anything to highlight there?
My report is in as well. Wanted to happen to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Okay, questions for chief?
I, I just noticed there was a lot of DUI reports in this report, and I, I was like, did they do a checkpoint or something? I looked, they were all scattered throughout the month. It was a little bit startling.
Our midnighters have been very, very busy, very active. Yes. For whatever reason, they're out and about, and again, these are dangerous individuals that we're taking off the roadway. So we're always happy to be that equalizer in making the road safe.
Thank you.
That they're, the department is to be commended for their activity. Yes.
Yeah.
I was just going to comment on the number of community engagement opportunities I saw on there, and that's just fabulous. I love that. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. It's a holistic approach, and the whole department is participating in that, so we're very grateful.
Yeah, that's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for that. Okay, we'll move to unfinished business. First up is a discussion on Chapter Four, Buildings Part One, Outdoor Lighting Regulations with Jenna Warko.
All right. At the July eighteenth regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors, the Board directed staff to review the township's lighting ordinance for dark sky compliance. Providing the agenda is a staff report that reviews township's lighting ordinance and includes best practices as well as recommendations.
Yeah. Did you want to go through anything that was in the agenda, or?
I can, I'm happy to walk through the report. At the end of the day, we are very close to the end of the year. If this is something that the Board would like us to consider, I would highly recommend kicking it to the 2024 work plan. While our ordinance, I wouldn't define it as a Rolls Royce of lighting ordinances, it is dark sky compliant. We do exempt residential and farms. That seems to be where a lot of our complaints are generated. If that's something the Board would like to consider changing, that is an option. Additionally, it's not a retroactive ordinance, so if there were lights in place prior to the current ordinance that we have, we cannot require anyone to change their lights. However, if there are new installations, then we do have the ability to do something about that. But again, residential properties and farms are exempt.
Well, thanks for the report. That's included in the agenda. It was very thorough. I was happy to see that we're dark sky compliant. I thought it was just really well done. So thanks very much. Patty had initiated the conversation, so I want to turn it over to you if you had comments on the report.
No, I'd say what you said, the report was amazing, so thank you for that to you and Kristin. That was amazing. I would like to probably put it on the, I would be in favor of putting it on the 2024 work plan and, and getting some more feedback from the Planning Commission, et cetera, on their thoughts on that. It's sort of an important thing. I know, at least in my neighborhood, it's, it's hugely important. So, yeah, I would be willing to have it go that way. And the, the other reason, so if I may, one of the reasons that I was really started it as well, too, in, in addition to conversations with people, but when I sit out and wait for my ride, our flagpole has four bright lights shining up, and I was like, how can we do that? I mean, so maybe in our own, in our own facility, we could somehow get solar lights that project down on our flagpole as opposed to up, so.
Yeah, it's interesting.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Any other discussion?
I just have a, just maybe some clarifying questions around the sheets was mentioned, and what was that point two? I forget the measure, the measurement. What is that, point two?
Pole or, yeah, something, yeah.
Yeah, lumens per foot or however that was. And, you know, how other construction is around point five, et cetera. Thought that was interesting. I'm wondering how that impacts any new construction that we might see right now. What does the ordinance do for new construction? Like, if we were able to negotiate and work with sheets to get it down to point two in their construction, if somebody wanted to do something else in Ferguson Township on a commercial property, where, where is the ordinance for them right now?
So sheets, I will say the sheets development is probably our best example of our lighting ordinance being effective. All land development plans, they have to comply with our lighting ordinance, and sheets is our best example right now of full compliance with it and dark skies. We ran into a few issues just with lights being installed incorrectly, and first time dust kit. We were able to identify that and get them addressed. But I would say sheets is the example that we have right now. The issue that we run into, again, are older land development plans that were approved prior to what we have today in our ordinance. So we try to capture them. I know one of the dealerships over here, Jeff was coming back from a zoning hearing board meeting, I think, and he noticed that they had, the lights had changed. And one, I forget which one it was. So we try to catch as much as we can, but at the end of the day, we only know if it's reported to us, and we all have our ways of going home. We can't catch them after meetings, but, yeah, for the most part, we try to work with everyone. Most people don't even realize that if they have lights in their parking lot, one goes out, they replace it. They don't even realize we have ordinance and the new standards that they would need to comply with. So a lot of it's education.
Yeah.
That was great. I thought the report was excellent. And again, to see the images, yeah, very good. Thank you.
Okay. There's no other discussion? Did someone want to make a motion? There's one recommended in the agenda.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors refer the amendment request to?
Or for the report.
Oh, the report to the Planning Commission.
I, Mr. Thompson, will second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. All right. Thank you. Thanks again for bringing that up, Patty, and Jen for that report, and Christina, too. That was really good. Okay, next is a presentation on the 2022 Township Audit presented by Baker Tilly, and we'll go to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The annual presentation on the prior year's audit is provided to the Board and affords the Board the opportunity to ask questions. With us this evening, we have, from Baker Tilly, John Compton and Christine Zoner, and they're here to give a presentation and answer any questions that you may have. So with that, we'll pull up the presentation and?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. And while they are walking up, I just want to acknowledge to the Board and express a, you know, appreciation for your patience. Of course, we didn't initiate the, the audit until much later in the year, given the turnover in the Finance Department, and we've been able to work very closely with Baker Tilly and submit the DCED report and have this presentation provided to you this evening. So, thank you.
We appreciate the effort and the thoroughness, so thank you for that.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us here this evening. My name is John Compton. With me tonight is Christine Zoner. We are auditors from Baker Tilly. We're here this evening to discuss with you the results of our 2022 audit of the township. The audit is complete. It was filed with the Federal Audit Clearing House in the Pennsylvania Bureau of Audits just before September 30th. Typically, the audit would have been done prior to that point in time. Just, you know, this year in particular is the year for entities to have turnover at that controller position or finance director position or what have you. And you had two of them within this timeframe, so that kind of elongated the process a bit. But we were able to get through it. Things went well. You know, this year's audit was what we know as a single audit. I think this may have been the first time that the township received and expended more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal financial assistance. So in those situations, any situation where a state, a local government, a not-for-profit entity, or an Indian tribal government receives and expends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal financial assistance, you need to have a special type of audit done known as a single audit. It's a bit of a misnomer. A single audit is both a financial statement audit that involves the audit of your financial statements, which you've always had done, but it also includes this federal compliance audit where firms such as Baker Tilly are essentially stepping into the shoes of the federal auditors. The Single Audit Act has been around for, geez, it's about forty years now. Prior to that point in time, CPA firms such as Baker Tilly would deal with the financial statements. The federal government and its inspector generals would audit the federal programs as time permitted. Single audit kind of combined that into one process. There are two opinions that we issue within a single audit. There's an opinion on your financial statements. I'm sure everyone's aware there are external third-party users of your financial statements. Federal government, state, local, your bondholders, et cetera, et cetera, are interested in that financial statement. As well as, we opine on your federal program compliance. Your American Rescue Plan program was your one major federal program this year, so that was audited for compliance. The federal government provides us with a playbook to use when we're doing that type of audit. We, it's known as the compliance supplement. It identifies the types of procedures they want us to do, kind of when we're in the field here doing this work, and we've done them. And both of those opinions were what we refer to as an unmodified opinion. As it relates to your financial statements, that means the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. There is a governmental accounting standards board, the so-called GASB, that sets rules for state and local governments that you need to abide by when doing your accounting in this financial reporting, and you did for 2022, so that's a good thing. And as well, the opinion that we provided on your major federal war program was unmodified, which means you complied with all of these rules and regulations that are part and parcel to that process. We do have about a sixty-slide presentation this evening. I know we don't have time for that. I noticed on the agenda we had ten minutes allotted, so I think what we'll do is just hit the key, key points. We'll leave you with our contact information. We're happy to kind of, you know, meet with you at your convenience to delve into any of this in more detail, but we'll just hit the really high points here this evening. So not sure who's controlling the slides, but if we could jump ahead to slide two. Just show you, we do have our contact information in there. Slide two, please. There we go. Yep, right there. So these are the folks. Christine and I are here this evening. There was another young man, Adam Hartzell, who assisted with the process. Adam's a senior manager with our group. I've been doing this, it's scary to say, but it's approaching forty years now. Adam's been doing it over twenty years, and Christine's seven, so she's, she's been doing it for a while herself. So if you do have questions, that's our contact information email. Feel free to reach out. If we could jump ahead to slide fifteen. There was one finding in the audit. It related to the timing of a filing of your 2021 audit with the so-called electronic municipal market access online system. Because you have your 2019 bonds, there's what they call a continuing disclosure requirement with those bonds whereby, after so many days, I think it was early October is the filing deadline, your 2021 audit was filed sometime in mid-October of 2022, so you missed that deadline. So that was cited as a finding. There was a corrective action plan that was prepared. I think you've engaged a third-party service now to kind of monitor that, to make sure that filing is done, which is, a lot of our governmental clients use that type of a system. So hopefully, no more issues there going forward. We did have some recommendations in the audit. I'll differentiate a finding from recommendations. A recommendation will be something that is more a housekeeping type of item. And those are on slide sixteen. You probably can't see those very well, so Christine, did you want to walk them through those issues?
Yeah. So a couple of points that we noticed. This was your first year that you had your stormwater fund kind of be in place fully without just the project going along, and it didn't necessarily follow all the DCD chart of account structures. That's something we kind of helped take care of and classify or reclassify into the proper accounts. It wasn't necessarily the wrong amounts. It was just not in the correct DCD chart of accounts. There is a PDF in DCD that kind of goes through and explains what belongs in what buckets. That does take time, but that's something that we, you know, we try to recommend just so we don't miss anything and you don't miss anything. So that's one thing that we had. There were a couple of accounts that we also noticed this year that weren't necessarily the material for our purposes, but that maybe didn't change year to year, so maybe just some general cleanup, just making sure that if it's quarterly or year-end, you have a process to make sure you're going through all accounts to make sure that there's nothing being missed, and does it really make sense if it's the same balance in 2020 as 2021? And then the last one that we kind of had was just your P-card and credit card best practices, which we have like a formal letter that we'll share with Centris, just with some of the best practices to make sure there's proper reviews in places and things, to make sure that, you know, not everyone can just take a credit card and go spend it where they want to. So we kind of have a formal letter there that you can also go through.
Christine, I'm going to jump ahead to the general fund budget.
Okay.
Which I think is on page thirty.
Yes. Okay, so sorry, again, this is very small. This is in our full financial statement report. There was just one, the main one that I wanted to point out that was kind of outside of your budget initially was your ARP funding, your American Rescue Plan money, which is what we did the single audit on. The township recognized that in 2022 for lost revenue, mostly for police wages in prior years. So when you're kind of looking at that comparison, that's why it's not, it's, it's over budget for the revenue received. In your financial statement report, there's a thing called an MDNA. It's your management discussion and analysis. It should walk through a handful of these with descriptions of maybe why some are over or under budget. I think that's all that I have for that one then as well.
Maybe we can talk about general fund balance?
Yep. Oh, sorry, yes. So for your general fund balance, you did have more revenues than expenses in the current year, so that's mostly to do, or mostly for your, or related to your ARP money that you recognize. ARP money that you recognized in '22. So, you do have a large fund balance. It would cover when we kind of do a calculation, we take your expenses, and how many days you could last with your general fund balance. I believe it's about 400 days, which is quite a few days. So, you are definitely in good standing. It's maybe like where you want to consider, do you want to be investing that money, putting that money somewhere? It is a large fund balance, but the township is in good standing.
Just a word. General fund, fund balance is kind of a typical measure that, say, a financial analyst would use when looking at a government's financial statements. They look for whether you have sufficient reserves in terms of your fund balance and how the amount that is available as it relates to what a typical general fund budget might be. Your general fund budget is 10 million, somewhere in that vicinity. So, you know, what would normally be considered sound would be maybe 2 to 3 billion. So, your 10 million is, it's robust. There's no question about it, which is a good position to be in. It gives you flexibility to, you know, undertake various projects you might have in mind. It enables you to weather financial crises as they may come about. It provides interest income. It, in all likelihood, puts you in a better position to borrow money at a better rate. So, just, you know, wanted to make that, put that in perspective for you. I think, just in the interest of time, we'll stop there. We're happy to answer any questions you might have insofar as it relates to the audit, or, you know, you can reach out at any point in time.
Thank you so much. Okay, questions? Whoever wants to start. Go ahead, Matt. Look in this direction.
Yeah, okay. Really, no comment was to say thank you, you know, for explaining a little bit more to somebody who's not, you know, first time going through all of this. And audits are absolutely important to make sure that we're doing everything correctly. And, you know, hats off, of course, to the township and staff for meeting all of those obligations and to the community there. It's also good to hear that we're flush, but maybe a little too flush. So, I think that opens up other conversations that I'm sure we'll be having in the future. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Have you got, nothing? Jeremy, anything?
Corey, if you have anything, just go ahead and speak up. We've got the screen covered. So, that's okay.
That's okay. I just want to thank them for their report. I appreciate it.
Yep, again, I'll thank you as well. I think you answered any questions I came in with. So, I really appreciate the presentation. That was very helpful. And, yeah, again, you've answered the questions I had. So, I'll go back to the manager. If you had any other comments?
The only other thing I would like to share with the board is that the, we call it EMA. It's the acronym for the Electronic Municipal Market Access. It's due October 1st, and it's an annual filing. And it was submitted October 12th of 2022. And unfortunately, there was some transitions there with leadership and trying to create a login account. For myself, took a lot longer than I anticipated. But we were able to engage the services of Concord Advisors, who actually facilitated the process for the 2019 bond that the township took out. So, they are, they are providing some support to ensure that we're filing that by October 1st and paying attention to any future leadership transitions, because there's quite a delay in trying to get the accounts transferred. The only other item I would like to say is the chart of accounts. We, the, you, the board may recall that the township invested in ClearGov budgeting software. And so, the budget for 2024 will be presented using ClearGov. And it's, the way that it's set up is based on the chart of accounts that are provided through DCED. So, we will, you know, staff has tried to make some accommodations to ensure that the representation of the 2024 proposed budget has some similarities and looks, and is easy to find based off of titles and subtitles as seen in previous budgets, but also acknowledging that we would have, as opposed to a finding, they refer to it as an observation. And there would be less, we would be able to avoid future observations and comments if we were able to follow those DCED charts. So, again, you'll see how following the chart of accounts that are required from DCED will make our budget look a little different. And so, I didn't know that you were going to say that, but since you did, I thought I would have. No, no, like, that's great, because that was something that staff has been spending time on, which is, you know, should we, should we override the system and change it? Or should we just comply with the DCED chart of accounts, understanding that the burden is ultimately on everyone that is used to reviewing our budget and then finding, for example, instead of it saying cog parks and recreation, it might say culture and recreation, because the DCED chart of accounts to be in compliance requires that use culture and recreation. But all of you and members of the public may very well be in a position to say, why, why is it here and not where we're used to, especially with the new presentation of the software? So, thank you for saying that. And I thought I would, I would leverage this opportunity to just present how and why you'll see some things itemized differently than you have in the past.
That's very helpful. Thank you for that. And again, thank you for walking us through this tonight, for being here.
Happy to be here. Just want to take a moment, thank Centris, thank James. I think both of them got more involved in the audit process than they ever would have wanted to. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And the other item I didn't comment on, I just want to say, the observation regarding the purchase card, the P-cards. The board may recall that we actually brought to you a revised procurement policy and a purchase policy. And while we went ahead and revised and the board adopted that policy, it'll go into effect January 1 of 2024, because of just needing to create some standard operating procedures and some having conversations with staff as we pull back some of the autonomy that has been had with P-cards. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you. And then I did want to ask, since, we do have the audit in the agenda, but since we didn't get to go through your whole report, if we could get that electronically, the presentation, I think that would be...
I have it, and I can send it to the board and provide it with the minutes.
Yeah, that would be great.
In the future minutes.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to new business with the consent agenda. Does anyone need to remove anything? Oh, I'm sorry. Do we need to do a motion for that?
There is a motion with the agenda, just to accept the report.
Yes, okay. I was looking around. I thought there was something. All right. Does someone want to make that motion?
Okay, I'll go ahead. This is Matt. I'll make a motion that Board Supervisors move to accept the 2022 Township Audit.
Hi, Mr. Thompson. We'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion on that? If no, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll move to the consent agenda. Did anyone need to pull anything from that? And if not, could I get a motion to approve?
Hi, Mr. Thompson. Move that we approve the consent agenda.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move to zoning ordinance text amendment request, Chapter 27, Section 715, accessory keeping of livestock. And we'll go back to Ms. Vorgo.
Thank you. On August 15th, Maria Arroyo submitted an application for a proposed ordinance amendment, Chapter 27, Zoning, Section 715, accessory keeping of livestock. The township only permits beekeeping in the rural agriculture, rural residential, and agricultural research zoning districts. And the applicant is requesting to permit this use in the single-family residential zoning district in order to promote the healthy reintroduction and maintenance of honeybees as a pollinator.
All right, thank you. Okay, any discussion on this?
I guess more of a concern, being somebody who's allergic to bees, and knowing the idea of, that a potential somebody who's allergic to bees, now all of a sudden has, you know, a beekeeper next to them in a R1 residential area where houses might be close together, et cetera, children at play. I don't know, I'm all for pollinators, but I'm concerned of the idea of bringing in a number of them. And I guess my concerns are around the safety of that for folks that may be allergic to bees. I wasn't sure how much went into, you know, the decision on that, or how much discussion had been had with folks related to what that means to bring in pollinators, how often they sting, what they do, how they're kept so they don't. I don't know if that's even possible. But that was my major concern with voting for this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know much about it, other than I've been at hotels where they actually have the beehives. And I think they tend to stay with the hives, but that's, that's just me. I, yeah, I don't know either.
So...
Yeah.
Jenna, I have a question. What are the townships around us? Do they allow beekeeping in R1?
I would have to actually look at that more. And that was kind of an alternative that staff was proposing. We looked back at our comprehensive update notes, and there was no specific discussion of how bees got lumped in with livestock. They really aren't. And as Patty has pointed out, there are many urban areas that are now permitting this type of use at a smaller scale. So, I think there's a lot more research that would need to be done on staff's part of this. Maybe another staff report, sort of highlighting what we have, these questions that the board is bringing up prior to a decision being made of, this is something we're interested in, let's kick it to Planning Commission for further review, et cetera, because there are no bee experts on staff either. So, we would need to do research as well.
So, this is likely something you'd recommend for next year's work plan if we didn't want to do any, okay.
I know that, I also had a friend who did it when we lived in Bethesda. She had a beehive in her backyard, but she used it then for her home business, like making candles and honey and things like that. So, anyway, I'd be interested in kicking it to the Planning Commission. So, I'll make that motion, as a matter of fact, that the Board of Supervisors refer the amendment to the Planning Commission.
I'll second Patty's motion. This is Mr. Thompson.
Okay. Other discussion, we'll go back to Patty, since you made the motion. Any other thoughts on that?
I was going to say, my understanding, the honeybees are relatively chill. They're not like some of the more vicious bees that will hunt you down and throw you out of your car and make you run, run the other direction. But, yeah, they're rather chill. And I would also imagine keeping a bees, just like the chickens and ducks, they should not necessarily be within so many feet of somebody's prop, neighboring property. So, I imagine you would probably have to trespass to really make them angry and bother them. So, yeah, I think it's something to look at. I, as a matter of fact, when I saw this today and saw R1, I actually looked up the zoning map, and I believe there's actually an R1 property in my ward that's actually got beehives in the backyard. So...
I was trying to remember the discussion around livestock on the Planning Commission at the time. There was discussion. I know we talked about the bees, and they're on, it's allowed in RR. So, I just, I can't recall the full discussion. So, do you need anything else in the motion that would say this would be on the 2024 work or agenda schedule? Or is this enough and it just gets prioritized as you're able to? Okay, okay. So, yeah, you know, and it would come back to us again after a thorough review by the Planning Commission. And then we'd have all the information and the comments from planning. So...
And I'm a person, I'd like to learn more. I mean, so that's one of those things. If somebody wants to invite me out and show me what these, I'd just be curious. Yeah, helps me advocate too. So...
Get them a bee costume.
All right. Any other comments on this? Anything from the manager on this? No? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move to the Burkett-Lucas, Lucas Minor Subdivision Plan.
All right. Provided in the agenda is the subdivision of lands belonging to David Burkett Living Trust, dated January 17th, and last revised August 8. This minor subdivision plan proposes adjusting a lot line to convey .17 acres from the lands of David Burkett Living Trust to Mr. Derek Lucas. The receiving parcel is located at 3189 West Pine Grove Road. The Living Trust property abuts Mr. Lucas's property to the north with no addressable structure on the property. The two parcels are zone rural agriculture. This minor subdivision has been submitted in an effort to correct parcel boundaries discovered upon a survey completed for the agricultural easement on the Burkett Living Trust property. There were a couple of structures that were not located on Mr. Lucas's property. So, this is in an effort to correct that. So, actually, the portion, in order to get compliance with the structures, that portion was left out of the ag easement. So, there were no issues purposely when this was all discovered. So, staff and Planning Commission have reviewed the plan, and we are recommending approval with conditions as described in the Community Planner's Memorandum dated October 3, 2023.
All right. Any questions on this? Or is someone ready to make a motion?
Yeah, this is Matt. I'll go ahead and make a motion that the Board of Supervisors move to approve the subdivision of lands belonging to the David Burkett Living Trust, with conditions as outlined in the Community Planner's Memorandum dated October 3, 2023.
Hi, Mr. Thompson. I'm, I'm, Mr. Thompson. We'll second that motion.
Okay, any other discussion? And if not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. We'll move to LaCrone West College Properties Preliminary Land Development Plan.
All right. Provided in the agenda is the LaCrone West College Properties Preliminary Land Development Plan, dated January 31st, and last revised September 22nd. This proposed plan is located at 3490 West College Avenue, tax parcel 24004079H, and 3510 West College Avenue, 24004079L. Both properties are zone general commercial and have corridor overlay district as well. This plan proposes a self-storage facility with six buildings totaling 46,036 square feet and 12 parking spaces at 3490 West College Avenue. The rear parking lot on 3510 West College is being slightly altered since it extended into the 3490 West College Avenue property. Staff and Planning Commission have reviewed the plan and are recommending approval with conditions as described in the Community Planner's Memorandum dated October 3, 2023.
Okay, questions on this? Or discussion? And if not...
No, all I was going to say is, again, this is part of the, the statement I was making earlier about the dark skies initiative, knowing that there's potential here, right, for, actually, some of the images that you showed in your report, Jenna, earlier on dark skies show buildings similar to what I would expect going into this property. So, again, I just welcome conversations between that, the owner of the property, and the township to make sure that we are doing our best to preserve the dark skies.
And they are required to comply with our lighting ordinance, which is dark sky compliant. So, this property will be.
Great. Thanks. That was my only comment.
So, does someone care to make a motion?
Sure, I can go ahead and do that. Here we go. Sorry, Patty.
No, go ahead. I was trying to call it up.
Actually, so was I, because now my computer is just frozen. There we go. Okay. Recommend a motion. I move that the Board of Supervisors approve with conditions the LaCrone West College Properties Preliminary Land Development Plan, subject to the conditions as described in the Community Planner's Memorandum dated October 3, 2023.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. So we'll move to request for consideration of a modification and waiver for LaCron West College Properties Preliminary Land Development Plan.
On September 22nd, 2023, Craig and Carrie LaCron submitted a request for the consideration of modification from 2251612 and a waiver from 225162A landscaping. And this is for the LaCron Preliminary Land Development Plan. So this plan proposed 46,000 square foot storage facility. And due to the location of the buffer plantings in relation to the stormwater facilities on site, long-term maintenance issues will be created. So the applicant is proposing a modification. There will be no reduction in plantings, only the relocation of the buffer yard plantings that are directly adjacent to the stormwater facility to other areas on the property. Additionally, for this particular type of use, the applicant wants to install a security fence along the 107-foot line of the property between these two lots. And this fence will cross a 15-foot section of the buffer yard. And 225162A doesn't permit any structures to be located within the buffer yard. So they are also requesting a waiver to permit that security fence in order to secure the property as well.
All right, thanks. Questions on this or discussion? I was just gonna see if the Planning Commission had any concerns or comments. No, okay. All right, no other discussion? Would someone like to make the motion?
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, this is Matt. I moved that the Board of Supervisors grant the modification from subsection 22-1, I'm sorry, 22-516.12, and the waiver from subsection 22-516.2.2A landscaping for the LaCron West College Properties Preliminary Land Development Plan.
Hi, Mr. Thompson, will second that motion.
Okay, any other discussion? And if not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. And we'll move to consideration on a contract award of Contract 2018-C20 Park Hills Drainage Way Improvement Project.
Good evening. You've got me nice today. Included in the agenda packet is a recommendation memo from me regarding the Park Hills Drainage Way project. We opened bids on October 3. We received two bids for the project, one from Aquatic Resource Restoration Company, as well as one from Leonard S. Fiore Incorporated. Both contractors were deemed qualified to perform the work. LS Fiore had a qualified subcontractor to assist in the drainage way components. And summarized in the memo is the bids that were received. The low bid was ARRRC, Aquatic Resource Restoration Company. And when we bid the project, we bid it with a base and an alternate. And we did that with the board discretion to award either one. And briefly, the difference between the two is the base bid included using limestone rock for any of the channel components will be visible at the surface. And the alternate bid was the exact same design, but using sandstone-acquired rock for any rock that, again, would be visible at the surface, that would give it more of an aesthetic look, maybe perhaps more consistent with what is in that natural environment. Functionality between the two designs, they will both work the same. I would say they have the same life service. You know, Dave and I kind of talked about the hardness of the rock. I really don't think we would see anything that would be significant between the two type of rock with respect to the serviceability of the project. So it really is just an aesthetic consideration, and it's up to the Board of Supervisors how you'd like to go on that. The difference in the base bid and the alternate bid for ARRRC is $87,500. Their low bid, their base bid was $2,388,736.10 and then 87,500 more for the alternative, $2,476,236.10. There is a detailed bid tabulation attached to that. The engineer's estimate from N T M, who was a design consultant for the project, was $2,341,495.25. So the low bid's slightly more than what the engineer's estimate is, but within a reasonable amount of what we anticipated based upon the final design. I will say the operating budget currently has about $1.5 million included for this project for construction that had a $200,000 grant that we had already received from National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. Since the budget was adopted last year, we also received a grant from the Susquehanna River Basin Commission for another half a million dollars. So in essence, the budget right now, as it stands, is just over $2 million to complete the project. So there would have to be additional funds considered moving forward in the 2024 budget to complete the project. I did also note, this project is, well, it's very unique in a lot of considerations. One of them is we are incorporating work for the State College of Borough Water Authority. So part of that total amount would be reimbursed by the authority for that waterline relocation work. It would be performed by our contractor while they're out there digging in the roadway. And then those costs would be reimbursed by the Water Authority. We also provided in the memo just kind of a, and it's really just a hypothetical expenditure of funds. We don't know for certain how quickly it will go or when it will be completed, but there is the possibility for some work to get completed yet this fall for tree removal, tree clearing, tree pruning. I think the bulk of the work will get completed in 2024 with the actual channel construction and the drainage improvements on Devonshire Drive. And then we've allotted time to go into the spring of 2025 for any plantings, the restoration plantings that are included in the project that may not get completed in 2024 as well. And again, that's just a hypothetical. Once the contract is awarded, then we get into the actual, you know, pre-construction meeting with the contractor and have a better feel for what their schedule. And then obviously, a lot of public involvement and engagement to let folks know what's going on. So based on all that, I recommend that the board award a contract to ARRRC in either the amount of $2,388,736.10 for the base bid, which is limestone, or the $2,476,236.10 for the alternate bid with the sandstone. And it's really, we can discuss that and whatever other questions you may have on it, but that is the recommendation for the project.
Thanks very much. Thanks for all that information and presentation. Questions for Mr. Seibert?
So, yeah, sorry.
Yes.
The rocks and the aesthetic that you're talking about, is this something that eventually grasses and shrubs are gonna grow around?
So there will be plantings alongside of the channel, but the bulk of the channel itself is all stabilized with rock, with a series of step pools and riffles. I don't know if you remember going back to the concept plans that we talked about. So the main waterway where the channel is will be mostly exposed rock. There will definitely be debris, leaves and stuff that'll get on it, but I expect most of that will be washed out as we have storm events. So I think that rock that you see, for the most part, will be there. Now, I will also say, it's not something that you're gonna see a lot of when you drive by on the road. Most of this is backlot in people's rear yards. So, and honestly, do I have an opinion one way or the other? No.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, for me, $88,000 for sandstone seems a bit excessive, especially just looking at the images and trying to bring myself up to speed on everything. Is there any talk of reusing what's there or repurposing it? Or maybe that wasn't clear to me.
Yeah, so the type of stone that will be necessary to construct the step pools and the riffles is pretty specific, and I do not anticipate that we will find any of that material on site. Any of the material that is on site will be used just for backfill and establishing the channel grade before it's lined. But the size and the type of rocks that we're looking at, they're very special. This is a very unique method of construction. I doubt that we'll find much, if any, of that on site. It'll mostly be brought in from quarries.
Is there any avenue to repurpose or sell some of that stone that's in there? I know that can be repurposed and not just put into a fill.
The material that's on site, that would be up to the contractor, the low bidder, that if there's excess material, it's theirs to either reuse or to waste. You know, we're using a lot of the trees, and there will be a lot of trees that'll be cleared, but we're reusing a lot of that material for a construction access route. We're actually gonna be building it out of chopped or chipped wood that comes from the branches from the trees that are out there.
Those are my only questions, and I guess the comments on the expense of the stone, so.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, other comments?
No, I sort of feel the same way. I mean, for that difference, anywhere we can, the utilitarian sort of thing, so if we can get it for $80,000 less, let's go with that. That's just me.
And I must say, you know, it's nice that we're at least taking on this project. Unfortunately, it does appear the cost have gone up over a million dollars since we talked about in 2019, but kind of is expected with the way the markets are and now that we're actually getting into the nitty-gritty. So I'd be in favor of the base bid.
And Corey?
Yes, I'm also in favor of the base bid.
As am I. I'm in favor of the $2,388,000. It is, you know, where this is, it's not, like you said, it's really not visible from the road as you're going through. There is, you know, grass and there are trees around there. And you spoke to the integrity of both, and so it seems pretty even, and since we're already over budget on this. And this project has been a long time coming. It's been needed for so long. And like Ron's pointed out a few times, it's so unique. I mean, this is a real, it's gonna be a real accomplishment once it's done. It's no easy or inexpensive feat, and so I think.
Yeah, that uniqueness of the project also is what got us that half a million dollar grant from SRBC.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, you're exactly right. And so I think where we can, you know, make some choices to reduce that expense a little bit, I think it makes sense. So I'd be in favor of that too. And if there's no other discussion, I'll look for someone to make that motion.
I'm ready to make the motion if, okay, with the permission of our Ward 3 folks here. I move that the Board of Supervisors award Contract 2018-C22ARRRC for the base bid in the amount of $2,388,736.10.
This is Patty.
This is Corey, I second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? And if not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. All right, thanks, and thank you so much, Ron. Okay, communications to the board.
Yeah, I guess I'll start. I had some communications regarding suburban park and the work going on there. And I've continued to get some feedback and input or comments about the proposed Wawa. And I also received an article regarding the plastic bag ban.
Thanks. Anything else?
I just got an article about plastic bag ban, but also had a communication regarding political signs.
I also had those communications, as well as another communication pertaining to the broken stormwater pipe in Pine Grove Mills.
All right. Okay, and we'll just look at a couple calendar items that we have here. It's Fall Bulk Waste Collection Week. Ferguson Township Police Department is having a car seat check at Bobby Ray Hall Honda. It says October 19th from 1:30 to 3:30 PM. And then we have next week our special meetings to review the draft 2024 operating budget. And again, a reminder that the application period for our ABC vacancies is open until November 1. So if there is nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
This is Patty, so moved.
And I'll second, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Aye, everybody.
Bye, Corey.